Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being with us this evening. We're going to call the May 24th, 2021 Rockingham County School Board meeting to order. The first item on our agenda is approving the -- or the first item on the agenda is approving the agenda. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Folk. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any questions or discussion regarding the agenda board members? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Ms. Bocock, you're going to record, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion carries four zero. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and the human republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll take a moment of silence. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for the return to in-person instruction plan. We have no speaker signed up for -- nope, we have no speaker signed up for the public hearing.
I have you.
I have you on the regular school board public comment.
I'm going to comment.
Okay, all right. Come on forward. Just state your name for Ms. Bocock and then.
Sure. My name is Burke Garrison. And I'm calling because -- or I'm here because I provided alternatives to all the school board members, including the school superintendent, for alternatives and strategies to stay open for a five-day opening even before the school started. And he chose not to accept those. He chose not to accept those acting like he's following CDC guidance. However, the CDC director said back in July that you should not use any CDC guidance to prevent schools from reopening. However, he still did it. And then back in November, you guys self-reported to the Virginia Department of Education that there was a thirty-plus percent increase of kids failing two or more classes in middle school and in high school across the whole county. And even after having those results, you still remained to stay closed. This is a completely experimental way of choosing to educate kids virtually, and it was a failure. And even after getting those results back in November, you choose to continue to harm the children in high school and remain closed. I also feel that you should consider releasing Oscar Scheichel of his responsibilities based off his performance, this awful performance for the kids, as well as child endangerment. He picks and chooses which guidance he wants to follow off of the CDC. And one of the CDC and Virginia Department of Health guidances is that you should not wear masks when doing heavy physical activity. And yet, he chose to endanger our kids and make them wear masks throughout basketball, cheerleading, wrestling. Wrestling and cheerleading are specifically called out in the Virginia Department of Health that they should not be wearing masks for risk of choking. And yet, he chose to continue to endanger our children, as well as the numerous articles that came out about risking the mental health of our children because of these experimental ways that you were trying to educate them. And it needs to stop. The madness needs to stop now. It was my daughter's birthday, and she wanted to come here. She actually wanted to thank Oscar for the Mondays off. My other son wanted to come, and he wanted to yell at Oscar because he felt that he didn't want Tim succeed. He felt that, you know, it was just a terrible observation to me that school was not safe enough to open, yet my children were going to school on a regular basis for wrestling practice. Schools, then, were safe enough to open, and yet, if you chose to participate in sports, you had to stay home. I thought we needed a school that needs to want children to be fit in mind and body. And I don't feel that that's what the school board or the school superintendent is supporting right now. We need to recalibrate. We need to adjust. There's people holding their kids back because they feel this is a failed, wasted year. And we need to get back on track and help our kids. As public officials, there are there are rules out there that it is your duty and your obligation to look out after the best interests of our children or of the public. And if you do not look out after the best interests of the public, you can be held liable for crimes of malfeasance where you can personally be obligated through fees or jail time by not looking out. And this was a disaster of a year for the entire community, and I want to make it sure it's clear that we need the schools to reopen. And even the reopening now that you think is only four days a week, you're still closed on Wednesday. Even when the kids were open for hybrid, you made them into like jail. Like many of the people that are keeping their kids home that choose to do it at this point in time, it's usually not over some fear of a pandemic. It's really that they don't want their children exposed to jail-like conditions. Getting daily reminders of sitting on tape balls, of having principals tell the athletes that they can't share food when they go to tournaments, yet then they personally go and ask for food collections for themselves. I mean, the hypocrisy and the everything just needs to stop, and we need to go back to normal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garrison. Is there anyone else who wants to speak as far as the public hearing for the return to in-person instruction plan? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move to recognition and presentations. I think Mr. Hutton is first, correct?
Good evening, Chairman Reed, members of the board. Dr. Scheichel, I want to welcome you all to MTC. We're very excited to have you all here and for you all to hold the school board meeting this evening. I have the honor of recognizing two outstanding students at MTC. So first, I'd like to call Talia Conde up here, please. Talia Conde is recognized by our visual arts and 3D animation instructor, Tabitha Daniel. Talia Conde is quite a familiar face here at MTC. Currently, in her second year of 3D animation, Talia has also been an outstanding student in our fire and rescue program, as well as architectural and interior design. Talia has a very friendly and bubbly personality that endears her to her classmates and teachers alike. She is quick to participate in class and always willing to give a helpful hand to those who need it. She's very creative, and Mrs. Daniel loves to see the work that she produces in class. No matter what field Talia goes into, Mrs. Daniel knows that she will be successful and a shining example of the quality students MTC produces. Congratulations, Talia.
Talia, did you bring people with you tonight?
Yes, I did. I brought my mom, my brother and cousin.
Your mom and brother and cousin. Can we give them a round of applause? Because we, as a school board, realize that students like this begin at home. And thank you for giving us such a wonderful student to have here at MTC. We're all very, very proud of you. This particular award is very close to our hearts because the character that you show is really important to us. So we are giving you a pin to wear close to your heart. We also are very proud of it and hope you're proud of it as well. So we have a certificate for your mom to hang up and display so everybody can see how proud we are. And then, it's also a pretty sweet thing that you've done. So we have a gift card to Klein's Dairy Bar for you, for you to share with your family. And can we give Talia? Talia, another round of applause.
Austin Hensley is recognized by his collision repair instructor, Eric McDorman. If there was a student Eric McDorman would clone, it would be Austin Hensley, who is the ideal student in every way. He comes in early, stays after class, and goes above and beyond all expectations. Extremely self-directed and driven, Austin maintains exceedingly high expectations for himself and is not satisfied until the final product meets these expectations, even if it means putting in additional work and time. He is well-spoken, polite, and mature, and other instructors have noted how confidently he carries himself. Austin's accomplishments extend beyond the classroom, from competing in Skills USA to building a garage with his father and completely restoring his own vehicle outside of class. Congratulations, Austin.
Austin, do you have people with you here tonight?
Yes, I do. I have my mom, my dad, and my stepmom.
Your mom, your dad, and your stepmom. Let's give them a round of applause. And I'm sorry, I should have said, do they have names?
Yes, Pam, Mark, and Sheila.
Pam, Mark, and Sheila. Thank you all so much. We have the accolades for you as well. And also, I want to make -- I should put my phone number on here somewhere because I want to make sure that you let me know where you're going to work. Because, boy, can't we all use a collision and repair specialist that's got a lot of character as well?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And let's give them another round of applause.
So tonight, I'd like to highlight a few of accomplishments that our students have made, but also tell you all about our direction and where we're headed here at MTC. The first thing I'd like to talk about, hopefully we can get this to work from here. There you go, is even though this year was a little bit different and our students had to compete virtually in their Skills USA contest, we still did extremely well. So we had limited virtual competition. So all the competitions were either done here at our school, or like my son, he did it in his bedroom. But they all competed against other members of technical centers and high schools across the state in Skills USA. I'm proud to say that we medaled in ten of the eleven categories that we competed in, and of those medals, we earned seven gold and five silver. Also included in your documents today were those lists of students that competed and earned a medal in the virtual skills competition. And we also included the schools for you all, so you all can see where the students came from and where the students participated from. As you can see from extempore speaking, I'm very proud of that one. So these students now will be competing at the national level, and unfortunately, they will not be able to go to Atlanta, Georgia like they should have. So again, it will be a virtual national competition where our students that earn gold will compete against students from all over the nation, Puerto Rico, and other countries beyond. And again, they'll either be here, or again, my son will probably do it in his bedroom. But they will be able to compete at the national level, and that competition is the third week in June. And then hopefully, we will be very successful there also. So that information had not been done since the last time we met, so I wanted to share that with you all tonight. What I also want to talk to you all about is issues, but great issues to have. So this year, we had more students enroll in requests to take an MTC class next year than we ever have. And that number was eleven hundred and sixteen. So that is outstanding. We have many programs that exceed our numbers because of the VDOH requirement, but we are very excited about the interest here at MTC and very, very excited about where our school is headed. But having enrollment like that and that amount of enrollment requests does create some issues. And these questions, some of the questions, are what occurs? Do we start new programs? How do we evaluate our existing programs? With our increase and decrease in enrollment numbers by program, when do we decide when we move forward with that program or we need to replace it with something else? How do we continue to evaluate our adult continuing education programs with Sandy Rinker? When do we decide that we do need to add additional help? Or when do we decide that those are just the slots that are available for that program, and unfortunately, it is what it is? And we will fill those slots, and students that don't make it into those slots will need to wait for another year. So that's a big question. When do we hire for additional instructor to add more slots? Or when do we decide that that's just the available slots that are available for that program? How should we look at our daily schedule? Should we look at a different daily schedule to possibly be meeting the eleven hundred and sixteen students that have requested to come to MTC when we know we can't fill that many slots? So then, do we become an exploratory CTE school? Or do we become a specialized center that has a very stringent application process where we're able to weed out the students that are very, very wanting to come to MTC because of his career aspirations? So which side of the fence do you fall on as a system? As an exploratory school or one that specializes in very specific programs and students have to go through a large process to get enrolled here at MTC? And also big, are we staying relevant, and are we meeting industry needs? So we're going to learn from the past. Kevin, you may have to hit the spacebar. So when we implemented the cybersecurity program, we made sure that we took our time. And we took three years to implement this program. We easily could have decided, oh, let's start cybersecurity, rushed in some curriculum, tried to get Mr. Ritchie not endorsed or as skilled as he is right now, and just start a program just so we could announce and just so we could scream from the top of the hill that we have a cybersecurity program. But we decided not to do that. We decided to let other schools make that mistake and allow MTC to continue to establish a program that we knew we'd be proud of and a program that we could showcase across the state and even the nation after what we decided to do. So we took some stakeholders meetings. We met with the Harrisonburg and Rockingham County Economic Development, Blue Ridge Community College, James Madison, and local audio/video companies. And we worked with a three-year process to figure out how can we make this one of the best cybersecurity classes in the nation? And then also, how do we appropriate our local, state, and federal funding to make it happen? So instead of rushing something that we could have easily done in six months, we took the three years. We implemented the technology. We got Mr. Ritchie qualified through a SANS training and other Cisco training, and we got the program to where we created, as you all know, the first educational operation security system or educational system in the United States. And we are still the only high school in the United States to offer that facility to high school students. So we're going to learn from that process and learn how to successfully implement new strategies. And again, we were able to create this. So the reason for all that buildup is where we are headed. So the first time for MTC, we are going to create a strategic plan, and a strategic plan that will hopefully answer most of the questions that we discussed about earlier. So in your documents this afternoon, I provided a roadmap and kind of a path of where we are headed over the next year, and we were going to be starting this process in August, and we will be starting to get through this timeline of getting the right people in the right room at the right place asking the right questions. And hopefully, when we meet in December, I'll be able to update you on how our strategic plan is going. We begin to meet in March, we'll continue the updating, so hopefully, I will be here about a year from now or the beginning of June submitting the plan for you all for action and approval. But we are hoping to answer those questions, because it's a great issue to have, and we're excited for these issues, but if we do not create a fundamental strategic plan on how to answer these questions, we're not going to stay relevant, we're not going to be the top-notch, best technical center in the East Coast, and with cybersecurity in the nation that we are now. I am the last person, and my staff is the last person that wants to see the school not have the reputation that it deserves, and not continue to have the reputation that we have across the tri-state area. And the only way to make sure that continues is to create a plan that leads us in the right direction. So I thank you all again for coming to MTC, we'd love to have you every year, and thank you all again for all of your support in making this happen and be a reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutton, we appreciate it. Just a couple of things. I'm going to ask Ms. Lohr to, we're going to kind of just add something in real quick, a school recognition that we forgot, and then we'll go into Inspire Awards, and we have a special recognition too. I would ask all of you here to stay through the highlights through, by board members. I know there's some little people in the room that probably don't want to stay, and that's fine, but I think that you may find some of the public comments, or not public comments, the highlights by board members tonight, a little bit extra. So if you have the time and can stay, we're going to march on through, and then there'll be a little break before action items, if you want to get out of here and not spend the time with us for action items, that's fine. So go ahead, Ms. Lohr.
We would also like to recognize Folks Run Elementary students for the Brittany Lamb-Kelly-Coggsdale Character Counts Award. That would be Dylan Steiner, the son of Juanita Steiner, and Kylie? Kylie Shipe, I'm sorry, what? Kenley or Kylie, Shipe, daughter of Daniel and Lauren Shipe. And congratulations to those students for being exemplary and winning that award. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. We're going to move into Inspire Awards, and I'm going to go a little out of sequence. First up is Olga Sugerson, presenting to Camila Shaw. So if both of you would come to the podium.
Because Shaw made online learning experience for us very personable, despite having like close to 30 kids in the Zoom meeting. This was new for us and for you, I remember the first week. But the way you made it work was just impressive. My son loves your class, and he learned a lot this year, since I was sitting next to him and I saw how he progressed through the year. I was concerned at the beginning how this online schooling is going to work for the six-year-old at that time, but you really made it work. He advanced in reading beyond my expectations. I didn't know, like that one day, he just woke up and started reading. That was very impressive. You made kids feel special and interested during the two-hour Zoom meeting, which is pretty hard with the six, seven-year-olds, and you were just a great teacher, and we were lucky to have you this year.
I was lucky to have you. And thank you for your support and being my co-founder for the whole charity, because it took both of us.
It was a fun experience, for sure.
And you got through the tears, right?
Yes, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Sugerson, for sharing your time with us this evening, we appreciate it. Michelle, thank you for all you do for the students at Peak View, we appreciate it. You're welcome. I think next is Dr. Shiflett, do you have a couple of presentations for us? The first presentation is on behalf of Kimberly Dove, who will be presenting to, Dr. Shiflett will present to Kim Price. Kim, if you could come forward?
I have some kind words from Mrs. Dove for you. I will forever be grateful for my son Liam's time in Mrs. Price's second-grade classroom. Prior to his time with her, he did not like school and was frequently having trouble in the classroom with behavior. Mrs. Price went above and beyond for him in order to help him find success in the classroom. By offering flexible seating and the ability to have an item to fidget with, I believe she changed his outlook in the classroom and helped him move forward in learning. While with her, Liam progressed in his reading abilities, ending his second-grade year on a fifth-grade reading level. His math skills improved, and so did his overall outlook on school. One evening, at the end of the school year last year, I asked Liam if he could choose one teacher out of all that he's had as his favorite, and he answered Mrs. Price. And his why is telling. He told me that Mrs. Price loved him. You see, up until second grade, he was just another student in the classroom who had some trouble. It was Mrs. Price who looked beyond the surface and saw his capabilities, for that, she deserves recognition.
Well deserved, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Price, congratulations. Dr. Shiflett, I think you're going to present on behalf of Terry Robra, and present to Candy Rodifer from Lynnville, Edum.
All right, Ms. Rodifer, from Miss Warball. Mrs. Rodifer has been such an inspiration to my daughter, Ally. She was her pre-K teacher and now her kindergarten teacher. Ally was terrified to start school, but Mrs. Rodifer was so kind and patient with her. She made her feel so comfortable and welcome. Ally has completely flourished since starting school. I'm so impressed with what all she has learned since being taught by Mrs. Rodifer. She is always available with questions if needed and willing to go above and beyond. She always keeps parents informed with what's going on in class. She is always so excited to see her students and is very interactive with them. I am truly blessed that she has been Ally's teacher. She deserves more than this award than anyone.
Thank you, Ms. Rodifer, congratulations, thanks for all you do at the students of Lynnville, Edum. Next, I believe, is Lane Schenk, who is going to be presenting to Jason Hendricks from Pence Middle School.
I can't say enough good things about Mr. Hendricks, certainly not in only 200 words, so I shall make this essay brief. Mr. Hendricks is one of the best teachers I've had. He's unique among teachers. Mr. Hendricks is cool, calm, and collected, not to mention relaxed. He certainly is the kind of teacher that makes you feel at ease. Whenever I ask him a question, he doesn't get frustrated, he simply answers my question and gives me a few tips. Once I cut my finger with an X-actin knife, and I felt terrible, because you know, we all had that feeling when we cut ourselves with an X-actin knife. When I timidly told Mr. Hendricks I cut myself, he was great. He got me over to the first aid station and told me to wash off the cut, asked me if I needed iodine, and gave me a band-aid. Not only is he caring, but he helps the kids explore interests outside their comfort zone. I had more fun than I thought I would going outside and taking photographs of nature for his class. I only wish every teacher was like Mr. Hendricks.
Lane, thank you so much for being with us tonight and for your thoughtful essay about Mr. Hendricks, we really appreciate it. Mr. Hendricks, thank you for all you do for the students at Pence, we appreciate it. The next presentation are Tammy and Laney Steele, presenting to Melissa Harper.
Laney and I nominated Mrs. Harper for the Inspire Award because she's gone above and beyond during the pandemic to provide private flute lessons to my daughter. Last summer, as she was entering sixth grade, she was quite disappointed to not be able to experience things like band, school musical, and things like that. So during orientation, when we met with Ms. Harper, she showed Laney her instruments and led her pick out which one she would like. Laney fell in love with the flute, and so we just asked, would there be the opportunity to have lessons privately? She said, sure, how about Tuesdays from 3:15 to 3:45? So she even went on to help us find a used instrument, and then beginning in September, she and Laney met weekly for private flute lessons. She went above and beyond during this crazy pandemic and will be forever grateful for this normalness throughout the craziness.
Thank you, Ms. Steele and Laney, for joining us this evening and sharing your information about Ms. Harper. Keep rocking on those instruments, so keep going. Ms. Harper, thank you for all you do to foster the arts in our schools, and for your willingness to go above and beyond, we appreciate that. You're welcome. The next presentation is Meg Unken, presenting to Erin I from John Whalen.
Hello, I'm Meg Unken, and these are my boys Eric and Andrew Unken, and I am honored to read my nomination for Mrs. I at John Whalen Elementary School now. This year was like unlike any year before. Our twins were so fortunate to have Mrs. I as their home learning academy teacher. She was organized, thoughtful, compassionate, and kind, as we all adjusted to virtual learning. I've never seen anyone who is so tech savvy, and she has taught our boys so, so much. They didn't skip a beat in their first grade year. This year, they learned how to read on their own, love math, and can navigate their iPads better than my husband and I. We are so incredibly thankful for Mrs. I and all she has done for our family. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Unken. Congratulations, Erin, thanks for all you do. That concludes our Inspire Awards for this evening. Just so that, for those of you who have not seen us give these awards in the past, each of the teachers that are recipients receive a certificate, and they also receive a gift card from courtesy of the Rockingham Educational Foundation. Their partnership with us is invaluable in making the presentation of these awards, so we appreciate their support. Next up, I think Dr. Scheichel, is this presentation yours or Mr. Hand? Ms. Shiflett, I'm sorry, Ms. Shiflett.
It will be open comment when I'm finished.
Chair read members of the board, Dr. Scheichel, it is with great pleasure this evening that I recognize before you and our community, the longtime service and retirement of Lynn Greg. She has dedicated her career to serving the mental health and wellness needs of children and families across our community, and her career story starts here in Rockingham County Schools. Lynn is a graduate of Madison College with a Bachelor of Science in Early Childhood Education. She did her student teaching at Elkton Elementary School in the second grade. She worked as a teacher's aide at Folks Run Elementary for one year, and during that time, in the evenings, she taught the Evening GED program here at Mass Nutt and Technical Center. She was a teacher at Burgton Elementary School, some of you all don't even know what that was, for seven years. Lynn received her Master's of Educational Specialist degree in community counseling from James Madison University, and in 1998, Lynn was licensed by the Commonwealth of Virginia Department of Health Professionals as a licensed professional counselor. For the past 26 years, Lynn has served our community as the Director of Children and Family Services for the Harrisonburg-Rockingham Community Services Board at the McNulty Center. Lynn's dedication has been demonstrated by her tireless effort to connect children and families to mental health services. Along with her role as Director of the McNulty Center, Lynn has spent hundreds, probably thousands, of hours in the Family Assessment and Planning Team, better known as FAP, meetings, determining the needs, creating plans, and approving funds for family services. Lynn has always promoted collaboration and teamwork with Rockingham County Public Schools. She was instrumental in establishing the concept of our widely-used child-specific team meeting, an avenue for school staff and community resources to come together in order to connect students and families with mental health and other service needs. Lynn promoted the Community Services Board partnership that started with Rockingham County's Public Schools in 1998-99 by placing clinicians in our schools. This program ceased around 2005 due to lack of funding, but Lynn was tenacious and continued to promote collaboration, and in 2015, the Early Intervention Program started with one school-based early intervention counselor, sharing four high schools. This valuable resource has expanded to our current six clinicians, one at each high school, sharing each attendants area middle school, one at RA, and one middle school level. Just this year alone, these clinicians have met with and supported 225 different Rockingham County students. Lynn's knowledge and insight is highly regarded by Rockingham County Public School staff. We have appreciated her on-call policy when we needed to brainstorm or seek guidance on a difficult case. She would always put the child's needs first with kindness, compassion, and encouragement, and point us in the right direction. On top of that, the McNulty Center under Lynn's leadership is connected to students and staff across our division by providing mental health kits for students, registration costs for trauma and mental health conferences, sharing the cost of the implementation of sources of strength, a positive messaging and suicide prevention program at Broadway High School, positive message yard cards during the pandemic to promote encouragement and hope, and serving on a panel for the viewing of Paper Tigers, a movie about trauma. Lynn's story is marked by many strong friendships and relationships. Her trusted colleagues will miss her colorful personality, her sense of humor, and her no-nonsense approach. We never had to question where Lynn stood on a matter. Lynn's dedicated leadership at the McNulty Center has increased access to mental health services for countless children and families in our community. It's obvious she has made a difference, and she will be greatly missed. On behalf of the Rockingham County Schools community, I'd like to thank you, Lynn, for your years of service. As you begin this exciting chapter in your story, we wish you a fulfilling and wonderful retirement with less stressful days, lots of travel, and more time with family.
I'm just going to, it's okay, Lynn, you can stay just for a minute. When we talk about our tiered systems of support initiative, we often talk about the amazing structure we have in place, the work that Becky Hill-Shiflett has done with that entire team and how that's filled out, and there's just always a handful of people who just contribute really core ideas to this. And I've only known Lynn for four years, but it started in July 2017 when we went to a conference in Richmond. I believe Mr. Falk attended as well, and I know we went to Richmond in the same car, and I remember on the way home, just the conversation all the way until, you know, we basically went our separate ways back in Harrisonburg. But this was a classrooms, not courtrooms, conference. We had Judge Black there, we had school administrators, and it was really at that conference that we, you know, talked about so many different ideas about how to help students get out of that school-to-prison pipeline, to make sure that services are available when they need them. And it was just a year later that, you know, two of the BCBA's, Alicia Fuller and Hannah Johnson, came and said, hey, you know, we have some ideas. And they involved, you know, that whole structure of tiered systems of support. And because we didn't have the early intervention counselors, and when that idea came about, the first meeting was, again, with Lynn, because she said, let's not just have these counselors in schools. We need to create this community of care. And so how about we hire the counselors, and then we make them available to the schools? The schools fund the process, but it's this constant collaboration of making sure that, you know, it's not only about the students, but their families that need all the add-on services. And we wouldn't be where we are without, you know, those people that contributed. And Lynn was a key from the very beginning, and so you will be missed, and I can't thank you enough, because it's one of the projects we are so proud of. It's not really widely recognized, because it is done quietly and well, you know, for those students and families, but without you, it wouldn't be what it is. And so we'll be forever grateful, you know, for your service, and especially I will be grateful for, you know, the collaboration on that project and what it means to our families now. So thank you for all the time you spend in Rockingham County Schools and with our students and families. And congratulations on your retirement. Thank you, Lynn.
Thank you very much.
We're going to move into public comments. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak for public comments. Is there anyone that wishes to address the board at this time? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go, we're going to move to highlights by board members. Mr. Falk.
Well, I'd just like to say what an absolute highlight it is to observe the Character Counts Award winners, the Inspire Award winners. And it's especially heartening to see that Lynn Gregg is going to get a well-deserved time off, because she has been one of the most fierce advocates for the well-being of children who have been affected by trauma that I've ever met in my life. And it has been, this has just been a good highlight altogether for the start of the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Dr. McQuilkin?
Thank you, Ms. Reed. I'd like to begin by talking about the Teachers of the Year. We had, each school has a teacher, selects a teacher to be nominated for the Teacher of the Year, and we are extremely appreciative and proud of every one of the teachers who were selected and every teacher in the buildings that selected them. The Teacher of the Year for Rockingham County, for the entire county, is Margaret Alger from Riverbend, who is the librarian. And I know it was a difficult decision, because all of the Teachers of the Year from each school were worthy of the single award that we have from Rockingham County. The second has to do with students, and this has to do with the scholarship winners. We had many, many people, many students who received scholarships from the Rockingham Educational Foundation, and we congratulate each one of those students having been selected. And once again, this was a difficult decision. Thirdly, I'd like to recognize Lynn. I know Mr. Falk did, Dr. Scheichel did, Mr. Hand did, Ms. Hill-Shiflett did, but Lynn and I are travelers, and so I know that you will, you'll have to tell us about all of your travels that you'll be doing in your retirement. Congratulations to you. And finally, I'd like to make a big shout out to Chief Holloway, who has worked tirelessly in vaccination clinics. He has been, he has done an absolutely outstanding job throughout this area, this county, our schools, and we would just like to say thank you to him.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Ms. Flor.
Thank you. Two of my favorite times of year, being a school board member, are banquet, FFA banquet season and high school and junior, or middle school, high school musical time. And this year, they're the same time. Hasn't the pandemic been fun? But I really want to recognize East Rock for their musical that they put on over the weekend. It was amazing. We've got so many talented young people in Rockingham County Public Schools, and that goes back to teachers like the one we recognized tonight. Thank you for all the work that you've done. I actually held the flute in sixth grade, because nobody took time with me to teach me how to use it. So thank you to all of our teachers who have worked tirelessly this year to educate our students. And we also had the J. Frank Hilliard Middle School FFA banquet, and they dedicated some very special jackets this year. So that was a really nice thing to see, and I'm looking forward to a couple more banquets coming up. So thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Flor. Before Dr. Scheichel goes, I'm going to make my comments. There's nothing like a school board member who has a migraine for the entire day to really get you going. Those of you that have not been to board meetings in the past, when we have public comment, the board typically does not respond to the person who has given us comments. We, the superintendent will reach out to that person or provide individual feedback. The comments in the public meeting are not designed for a back-and-forth conversation. Having said that, I'm a little disappointed that we have speakers, and we've not seen that just tonight, but other nights who come here, speak to us, have constructive criticism or other criticism of us, and then leave before we applaud our teachers, our staff, and our students. That is not fair to the people in this room, and it makes me incredibly disappointed. So I'm just going to say that if you come down here, you want to share your criticism, fine, but please stay and show your care for Rockingham County Schools by listening to the accolades that come after your comments. Finally, anybody who thinks any of the five people and the sixth person who's not here does not care about the students of Rockingham County is sorely mistaken. We have worked very hard in the last year to navigate things that we never thought we would have to navigate, sometimes sacrificing the interest of our own families to deal with those issues. We've worked countless hours. The superintendent has worked countless hours. His staff has worked countless hours. It's okay to come here and criticize us. Trust me, we've got 20,000 opinions on how we should do everything, and that's part of our position and our job on this board. But the thing that really ties us up in knots is when you come down here and tell us that we don't care about the children of Rockingham County, because I can tell you that we do. And I have two children at home will tell you that I've missed a birthday because I've been in school board, or I didn't go to a soccer game because I had another meeting to go to. And that same can be said of everybody who's employed in Rockingham County. We've heard from teachers who have gone, about teachers who have gone above and beyond. So I'm going to get off my soapbox, and I'm going to go home and take some Excedrin tonight to get rid of my migraine. But, and I don't, I know I'm not really, the people that probably need to hear this are not sitting in this room, and that's the unfortunate part. Thank you to all of you for being here tonight. Thank you for those people who have received the accolades tonight, for the students who have shared their time to come down here and tell us their love of their teachers and their staff and these schools. And I encourage our students out there, typically this time of year, our seniors, well, we're almost beyond that point, our seniors come down here and they have to fulfill their obligations for their course, their government courses. Come down here and they sit through a meeting, and we always have a little bit of a give and take with them, and we encourage them to thank somebody, a teacher in Rockingham County that made a difference in their lives. So if any of them are listening to us tonight, or parents out there, please thank our teachers. Please take the time and thank our administrators and our senior leaders of Rockingham County for the yeoman's job that they have done for the last 16 months. I greatly appreciate it, and I'm pretty sure I can speak for the other board members in saying that we all appreciate everything that's been done. Thank you. Dr. Scheichel?
Thank you, Ms. Reed. I'll first thank everyone who has called and engaged us in conversation. So many people during the pandemic were angry. They were mad about what we did. They felt like decisions should be made differently, but it's amazing how many times it's possible to find common ground and then go from there. And that's been really just important to see, that we find that even if it's a very small piece of common ground, and then we go from there and talk about how we can get to a better place from that place of common ground. And every now and then, there are simply those in the community that don't look for common ground, so they are more interested in hearing themselves talk. And to that, I just can't respond, right? I have nothing to say. In terms of highlights, FFA banquet, you know, we've been to a few, and there are more coming next week. I attended the banquet for Spotswood High School, and that was, as always, just a joy to be with the A community where people understand, you know, that life is complicated, and it's not about them, and they try to serve a community. And just the FFA motto, I've often said, you know, if they didn't already have it, I would have loved to have that for the school divisions, a learning to do, doing to learn, earning to live, and living to serve. It's the idea of serving others, and it's one of my favorite mottos that I've really ever heard in the A community that speaks volumes, and those are a lot of the people that we find common ground with. And as for the pandemic, I do want to point out, I think March 18th last year was the first time VDH published the numbers, and there were 10 cases in Virginia. Four days later, there were 67, and since then, there's never been a day below 80, and today we were at 76 across the state. So just four days in, right? So that's where we're, that's where we're back at on a day like today. And so I want to point that out as well. And in that effort in reducing the cases and getting people vaccinated, Chief Holloway does stand out. I was asked to write a letter of recommendation for him, and that was easy to write. I really, they didn't want to read, you know, five pages, but I could have easily filled those just with all the things to say about him. So he was nominated for Virginia Office of Emergency Services Outstanding Leadership Award, and I can't imagine someone working harder, you know, Chief Holloway called families that don't have email at home with his spouse on a Friday night to register them for vaccine clinics over the phone. And so he's really taken every possible step to help the school division and to help the community. And certainly, the way the numbers are, it's in large part due to the efforts that he showed. And so, again, that's a person that I will always be grateful for having known and had the privilege to work with. So those are my highlights. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. We'll move into action items, board members. Anybody, this is your cue if you want to slip out of the room.
Yeah.
Thank you for being with us this evening. If you want to stay, if action items are your fancy tonight, you're welcome to stay. Okay, so board members, we have minutes to approve from the May 10, 2021 meeting.
I move we approve the minutes from the May 10, 2021 meeting as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Flor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or discussion, board members?
Ms. Mast?
Yes.
Is this the same company as we've had in the past?
Yes, it is the same company that we have used before.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Federal programs. Dr. Pence.
Before I present my final action item of my career, I do want to use this opportunity to think past and present, superintendents, school board members. Over the past 28 years of my employment and supporting my role as a teacher, assistant principal, principal, and director, each of you have played a part in my life as well as my career. Your vision and continued decisions on behalf of struggling students I've seen in those 28 years with every school board member and every superintendent, and it's made Rockingham County one of the best, if not the best, in the nation. You've weathered a very rough year, and you have excelled in your ability to navigate the rough seas. Please, and I wrote this, of course, before tonight, please continue to know that the majority of this community admires and appreciates your work. And if I could just use this as an example, my 93-year-old mother, who those who know you know--
I move we approve the minutes from the May 10th, 2021 meeting as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any question or discussion, board members regarding the minutes? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Bochak's going to tally the votes. Motion is approved. Student accident insurance. I think that's you, Ms. Mast. Good thing you moved forward.
You should have a memo or that was on the agenda. The following two vendors were contacted to provide information about their plans for voluntary student accident insurance. I reviewed both of those plans and am recommending that the voluntary student accident insurance be awarded to K&amp;K Insurance for the 21-22 school year. As a reminder, this accident policy is a voluntary policy that is available to parents to purchase.
I recommend approval of the plan for voluntary student accident insurance as presented by Ms. Mast.
Thank you, Dr. Seichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the student accident insurance. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation regarding the voluntary student accident insurance as submitted by Ms. Mast.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or discussion, board members?
Ms. Mast?
Yes.
Is this the same company as we've had in the past?
Yes, it is the same company that we have used before.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Federal programs. Dr. Pence.
Before I present my final action item of my career, I do want to use this opportunity to think past and present, superintendents, school board members. Over the past 28 years of my employment and support in my role as a teacher, assistant principal, principal and director, each of you have played a part in my life as well as my career. Your vision and continued decisions on behalf of struggling students I've seen in those 28 years with every school board member and every superintendent. And it's made Rockingham County one of the best, if not the best, in the nation. You've weathered a very rough year and you have excelled in your ability to navigate the rough seas. Please, and I wrote this, of course, before tonight, please continue to know that the majority of this community admires and appreciates your work. And if I could just use this as an example, my 93-year-old mother, who those who know you know her, she's as sharp as a tack. She's been in this system 93 years and she said this. I think that Dr. Seichel's really done a good job this year. And I think that school board members have done everything they could to try to make the right decisions. I listen to my mom. I want you to listen to my mom and listen to all of those people in this Rockingham County who you don't hear from. Because we just, if you had as many people writing you as feel the way my mother does, you'd even be more overwhelmed. And you wouldn't just have a headache, you'd probably be in deep depression for an age. So thank you for the privilege of serving children, families, teachers and the division as a whole. Now, to get to the official business at hand, I do draw your attention to the 2021-22 federal applications for Title I, Part A, Title II, Part A, Title III, Title IV and Title I, Part C. And these are based on projected leveled funding and the final allotments will come late fall. And I will go through each one, but if you will look, as you know, all of these are based on the Every Student Succeeds Act of 2015, known as ESSA. And we do receive federal funds for, to support schools that have struggling or high need students, to support the education of English learners who have limited English proficiency and engage in strong practices to effectively improve instruction and learning. So for next year, Title I, there's approximately 4,958 students that will be identified in 13 Title I schools, K to 5 grades based upon free and reduced percentages for each school. Only two of the 15 elementary schools, that's Peak View and John Whalen, are not Title I schools. In addition, 21 private students, private school students at Eastern Menonite Elementary and for the first time, three students at Minnick will also be served by Title I and Title IV funds because they go into Title I. The projected Title I funds will probably be significantly increased, but this application is based on 1,600,000. It should go up. Title II, the school year for next year, the approximate Title II funds are leveled spending, 270,419.61 cents. I got to do pennies, y'all. I mean, like, I'm dealing with millions, I got to deal with pennies, y'all, so. But I've done good on that, I've kept the pennies. These funds are always used and will remain to be used for student-teacher ratio in Title I classrooms in grades one to three. Title III, there are approximately 1,482 students, K through 12, who qualify for EL services. That's 684 served and about 800 monitored. Again, the funding is flat funding, it's 108,930.75 by late fall. We should maybe get a little more in that. Usually that doesn't increase a whole lot. But for the first time, the entire amount will be used to fund the salaries and benefits of four full-time ELL instructional teacher assistants. That's a big, that's a big movement forward because they've not before been able to have benefits. They were aides and now they have reached the status of instructional teacher assistants. Title IV goes into Title I and we are using that to fund a behavioral specialist, as in the past, and two behavioral assistants. And that amounts 129,380.48. The other is a Title I, Part C, and that is the education of migratory children. And JMU serves as the lead division agent and administrator of the Shandoll Valley migrant education program, but they do come under our services. So I'm open to any questions you might have, but I do present these as action items for your approval.
I do recommend to approve the federal programs' application for the 2021-2022 school year as presented by Dr. Pence, including the regional migrant program agreement.
Thank you, Dr. Seichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the federal programs' applications for 2021, 2021-2022, do we have a motion for approval?
I move that we follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the federal program applications for 2021-2022 as submitted by Dr. Pence.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Any questions or discussion, board members? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And Dr. Pence, please say thank you to your mother for her kindness.
Chair Reed, Dr. Seichel. I have three bids this evening. It's your pleasure if we wanted them individually or all together.
Any concern? I think all together is fine, Mr. Reed.
So the first bid would be the boiler, electric boiler replacement at Lacy Springs Elementary. We had seven firms that were sent in bid package, we had two firms attend a mandatory pre-bid and one firm responded with a sealed bid, Riddleberger Brothers, in the amount of 64,352 dollars. The second bid is for duct cleaning at Broadway High School. Again, we sent to eight firms and we had two firms attend a pre-bid conference. One firm responded with a sealed bid, Riddleberger Brothers, in the amount of 89,751 dollars. The third bid is for HVAC controls replacement at Spotswood High School. Again, we sent this to eight firms, we had four firms attend a pre-bid conference. Two firms responded with a sealed bid as followed, Johnson Controls at 679,500 dollars and Riddleberger Brothers at 262,253 dollars. We did reach out to a number of these contractors, asking them reasons for not bidding, workload, timeframe, working in schools were reasons that were given. But it is my recommendation to award all three of these contractors to the responsive low bidder. In each case, it was Riddleberger Brothers in the amounts given.
I recommend approval of the bids for boiler replacement at Lacy Spring, duct cleaning at Broadway High School and HVAC controls at Spotswood High School as presented by Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Dr. Seichel. Board members, you've heard the superintendent's recommendation regarding the three bids or the three replacement items as presented by Mr. Reed. Do we have a motion for approval?
I move we follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the low bids.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any other questions or discussion, board members? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Also, thank you, Steve, for all the work you put into this. It's telling that you sent the packets to, you know, seven or eight companies and then you have multiple attendees at the pre-bid conference and then only one replies and then in one case, two replied. But the difference is pretty telling in why usually only one replies, because it seems like you've created a relationship there where the bids do come in, they've done quality work for us and the bids come in at an amount that no one really wants to compete with. And so thanks for creating those relationships and continuing those and for all the work that you do to make our buildings amazing. Like we often say, you know, it's one of the things that everyone who visits our schools comments on, how amazing our buildings look. And that's in no small part due to your work. So thank you, Steve.
Dr. Shiflett.
Chair Reed, members of the board, Dr. Seichel. Recently, the Department of Education released some guidance for schools to consider when reopening. And they entitled this "Virginia Learns" with an emphasis on learning, engaging, assessing, recovering, nurturing and succeeding. And that document's about 48 pages in length and I'm going to read it to you now.
That'll calm us down sufficiently.
Just kidding. I'm going to provide some highlights for you as to how Rockingham is already using some of this guidance and how we'll use it moving forward. Kevin, am I driving or you driving? Okay. So some of the recommendations and resources are related to best practices in regards to equity, curricular remediation and intervention, assessments and data analysis, student and staff wellness, technology to support learning. And there are six major themes and I'm going to touch on each of them very briefly. First, virtual learning may be appropriate for some learners, but it is not the best instructional format for all learners. And we heard this evening, some teachers in our Home Learning Academy were recognized for Inspire Awards. So it does work for some students. The shutdown has had an impact on students' social, emotional well-being and we have to recognize that, as well as staff. We have to consider remediation and what forms that may look like moving forward. Allocations of resources should be equitable. Safety protocols need to be clearly articulated and implemented with fidelity. And technology, hardware, software, internet access, all the above, need to be readily available across the community. So let's talk about virtual learning first. So we started this year, we had the Rockingham Home Learning Academy, the HLA, and approximately about 20 students have participated today, I think, I think the average is 22% between elementary, middle and high. And again, some students have been successful in that model, however, there are students who are not successful. We've, they've just kind of fallen off the radar, so to speak. And having the Home Learning Academy also strained our resources. We had to move and shift staff around. So two of our elementary schools, they do not have a librarian because the librarian was needed for the Home Learning Academy. They're short reading specialists. And so it really limited our resources and made scheduling difficult for our middles and high schools. It was a challenge. And so as we look into next year, we're not considering offering the Home Learning Academy as an option for families who just say, hey, I want this option, okay? Now, we are having some conversations about partnering with Virtual Virginia for some families who may really need that option. But just to put it out there as we did this year, to say, pick one or the other, we're not planning to do that, okay? But if we have some families who there's a need, we can partner with Virtual Virginia and provide some resources, but it will not look like it does this year with a Rockingham County teacher. It would be their teacher of record teaching our students. We would still kind of hold ownership of those students, but we'd have to pay Virtual Virginia to do that. Social, emotional health, you know, providing training to prepare staff to promote student health and wellness. And I know Becky Hill Shiflett with her tiered systems of support has been working on that. It's something, we're having Wednesday's agenda meeting with high school principals. We're talking about what we can do as our kids are coming back to us in August and what we need to do. Let's not think about the learning loss and all of that, let's think about the social, emotional well-being of students, that's a priority. And implementing self-care strategies. And I will say, you know, the relationship piece, our teachers do a tremendous job. The Inspire Awards that you hear, you know, you heard this evening, but you hear, you know, at our meetings, our teachers know how to build relationships with students. And the communication, I think Dr. Seichel's done a tremendous job communicating with families and stakeholders as well as our principals and keeping parents informed as what we're doing and how we're moving forward. The topic of remediation, they kind of break it down into curriculum, instruction and assessment. And I'm going to talk specifically at our June meeting about summer school and what we're doing specifically with summer school and get into weeds with that. But just know, we do have some things planned for summer school for our students, K-12. The focus should be on curriculum development and for the sake of time, Mr. Perkins, can you click the link, shared lessons? Our teachers have worked just tremendously this year collaborating, creating lessons. We have this landing page, the RCPS Collaborative, where our teachers have put lessons in there for each other to use, they've divided and conquered. And could you click on elementary for me, please? And even when you get in there, we've worked to identify the top 10 pieces of curriculum that students need to learn to be successful at the next level, realizing that, you know, we're not going to be able to teach all of the curriculum, right? So what are the most important things? Our teachers have done a tremendous job and our supervisors have led that initiative. So I'm really proud of that work and also the work with our ITRTs and making sure that, you know, these resources are there and they're curating those and helping adapt the curriculum for the Home Learning Academy. So a lot of moving parts. So thank you, Mr. Perkins. And then the last piece, identifying interdisciplinary teams. And I would say our supervisors do a nice job in working with teachers to look for opportunities to enter, to teach courses and subjects interdisciplinary. So let's read and write about things in science and social studies so you can get the benefit of two things at once. So it's about using your time a little more wisely. In terms of instruction, creating schedules to provide collaboration time, our Wednesdays have been very important for that to happen. I know some teachers have expressed some remorse that we're going to buy five days, which is definitely necessary and the right thing to do. And then also just the work in providing engagational instructional activities, the things that our teachers have been able to do, given the parameters, early on, we have six feet social distance at first and kids with masks and how do you do some of the things in labs and so forth? So our teachers have been very creative in those ways. And then the last piece for this portion of remediation, recovery and intervention is assessment. And we, you know, we have really continued to move forward with performance assessments. Mr. Dickerson has done a tremendous job getting us aligned with the social studies performance assessments that we're allowed to use. And I think, you know, all of that moving us towards the five Cs, which has been something we've really been talking a lot about the last few years, those skills that just are more important than ever, right? And not that content's not important, but those skills have to complement it, they go together. And then we also kind of revised and made some shifts in our grading system for this year. If you recall back last March 2020, you know, we sort of, the mantra was grace over grades. And we tried to really, you know, promote that message and our teachers were very, I think, receptive of it. And so this year, on this school year, we eliminated assigning grades at the elementary school. We didn't have letter grades. We really focused on, you know, the ongoing communications with programs like CSOL where, you know, teachers are constantly sending pictures and information to the kids' families so they're in the know of what's happening. And we placed an emphasis on the narrative report. And so that was, that was a shift for us. And then at the secondary level, we implemented a 40% as the floor. That was the lowest you could go. And that was another shift, paradigm shift for people, because, you know, zero to 60 was sort of the norm and now all of a sudden, we put in this floor. And I think it helped students tremendously with their grades. And then for this current second semester we're in, we just have one semester grade. We haven't had the nine weeks that we're used to. We were going to try that the first semester, but we weren't having as much success, so we did a 40-60 split. And I think these are conversations that we need to continue to have moving forward. Like, is that 40% floor? Is that something that needs to stay in place? Do we need fourth graders to get letter grades, right? We know, students do not need grades for learning. They need feedback, but not necessarily grades. And so I think it's a conversation, you know, for this board to have as far as policy and what do we want to do and shape that moving forward for our students. Another piece I want to highlight is our work with equity. So I have been having the opportunity to work with our equity team. We've got about 40 members strong on that team. It's administrat- to work with our equity team. We've got about 40 members strong on that team. It's administrators, teachers, a couple of community outreach folks from Bridgewater College, James Madison University. And we meet monthly to talk about our work with equity in Rockingham County Public Schools. And our overall goal is we want to apply an equity lens in everything we do. And we don't want equity work to be something else or something different. We just want it to be part of how we do business. And it's been just enrich, it's been very rewarding to work with this group and have some really tough conversations. And just last week, I started working with a group of high school students from each of the four high schools, and we talked about our work, and I shared with them our goals. And we got some compliments from the students about our work. And so, we took some of the language from the Department of Education's equity team, and we kind of reshaped it to make them ours, right? So, we felt like we owned it. And so, creating a caring learning environment which values the richness of diversity within our community and beyond is one priority. To ensure that a student's race, gender, class, language, national origin, religion, disability, sexual orientation, or gender identity will not predict their success or failure in school. So, we've committed to the fact, if you check a box, that should not be a predictor of how well you'll do in school, right? And then also, then identifying opportunity gaps that exist among student groups, and then working to close those gaps while maintaining high expectations. And I think that's the key. It's not about lowering the bar for everyone to cross over, but keep the bar high. And then, and part of our work, we realized that we need to get our school leaders ready to lead. And we started about a month ago, we had a training with the Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities, and we've partnered with them. We're going to have some more training in August, some more following up in November, to really get our principals up to speed so they feel like they're in a good place to lead. And then, as we get into second semester, start doing some work with our teachers. And as well, our, you know, our tiered systems of support is also a testament of what we're doing for all students, right? Because again, when we say all, that's what we mean. We mean all, not some all, but all, all. Health and safety, oops. So, we continue to update our health and safety plan based on recommendations from the governor, the CDC, the VDH. And kudos to Cheryl Mast. She does a terrific job overseeing that work and making sure, you know, it seems like the executive orders or some regulations changing almost from day to day, week to week. And so, you kind of wait till something new comes out and give it a couple of days, and then we readjust and move forward. But she's done just a great job with that. And I would say too, we've put things in place that we're implementing our plan with fidelity. We have monitoring in place, so it's not just, here's a plan and just throw it on the shelf and ignore it. But people are being attentive to that health and safety plan. And then the last piece I put on here is kudos to Chief Holloway for his work, what he's done. And Dr. Scheichel, I mean, the work the two of them is to try to get vaccination clinics and make it happen, and their communication with each other, that's been tremendous. And, you know, you hear the news about the numbers, how they're going down. That's, and that's the fruits of your labor, you know? So, I appreciate both those gentlemen working hard, and that collaboration has been really cool. And then the last piece is technology. And, you know, that's one of those places where, when this pandemic hit and people, you know, school districts running out buying this and buying that, we were in a really good place in most ways. I mean, we were pretty much one-to-one. We had to do a little work in pre-K and K. And the technology infrastructure, the wireless access points, unbelievable. All that stuff was there, right? We were just, we weren't panicked over that. Kevin Perkins did a heck of a job, him and his staff. They distributed over 1,300 hotspots. So, again, go back to our equity work and trying to make sure every student has access, right? You know, just because you live in a certain part of the county or you're in a certain economic status, we were going to make sure you had a hotspot. And, you know, the things that, you know, DOE is saying, well, you need to have content filtering. Yeah, we've had that in place for many years, right? This is not new. And then our work with student data privacy. We've been meeting for two years talking about this work. So, when DOE comes out and says, hey, make sure you have these things as part of your plan, man, it's a quick check for us. I mean, we've been doing that for years. And again, kudos to Mr. Perkins and his staff for that. And I guess the former director of technology probably had something to do with it too, I guess. So, anyway, do you have any questions for me about any of this? I kind of threw a lot at you in a hurry, but that was probably better than reading the 48 pages to you.
Board members, any questions for Dr. Shiflett?
Thank you.
Dr. McQuilkin?
Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. We appreciate hearing this report from the instructional perspective. Thank you.
Dr. Shiflett, you know what I'm going to ask you about, don't you? Can you, obviously, we've, there's some math content changes that are happening at the middle school level that I think the board members have received some feedback about. Can you just kind of give us a little bit of an overview of that?
Yes, I'd be happy to. So, basically, there's kind of two things I want to touch on. One is this. Typically, students in middle school, they are recommended based on different criteria for taking in seventh grade, let's talk about seventh grade first, math seven or pre-algebra. Okay? So, and it's based on fifth grade SOL scores, sixth grade SOL scores, grades in mathematics, some aptitude testing, teacher recommendations, so forth. And teachers began having conversations with our supervisor of mathematics, Mrs. Ricker, a couple of months ago, saying, and we're missing some data here. And we've got to make a recommendation for a student. And on the surface, they say, well, what's the big deal? You know, make a recommendation, flip a coin or whatever. Well, there's some trajectory that goes with this, right? So, if a student takes math seven, maybe just purely math seven, there's a chance then maybe they won't take algebra one in eighth grade, right? Which means they don't get calculus when they're a senior. So, you're putting a student on a path, and you're going to make a decision which path he or she's going to go on, what track, if you want to use the word track. And so, the teachers said, I don't, not really, how do we feel about that, right? It's kind of a tough decision. And so, we know that's one piece of it. So, we're lacking some important data to make this decision. The second thing that we know is that when we accelerate education, right, and move kids forward, they can rise to the occasion and meet the challenge. So, and there's some, just read a really good study, just came out, I just got it today in my inbox, that in a school district this year where students were provided just remediation, trying to catch them up from whatever they missed, what have you, compared to students who were accelerated and moved on and had just-in-time learning, they outperformed them. Okay? And where it really matters is for students in poverty, students of color. So, we had conversations with the middle school math teachers, we had conversations with the middle school principals. And at the end of the day, we said, let's do this. Let's just put the students in math seven, and let's prepare them all for algebra one in eighth grade. And let's give them the instruction to get them to algebra one. So, we're going to give all students a chance to get there, not just the ones we pick. And there's some questions that people have said, well, how are you going to do that? Because some kids have more aptitude for mathematics than others, and I understand that. So, we'll use some small group instruction. We'll use flexible groups. We'll allow teachers to have flexibility to shift kids between classes, right? To make sure that, you know, maybe a certain group's going to work on a particular skill or what have you. But the ultimate goal is to give an opportunity to as many students as we possibly can in seventh grade, right? Because that's where most of the questions have come. Eighth grade, we still have algebra one and math eight. And so, again, so we take the fact that we have limited data, and we know high-achieving students, they do well and perform well, whether they're in a homogeneous group, everybody's the same, everybody's high achievers, or they're in a heterogeneous group. The data is clear about that. And here's what we also know. The students who are low achievers, when they're in that heterogeneous group, that mixed group, they perform better. They do better. So, we give a benefit to some of these kids that maybe we would have said, ah, you go here, this is your track. But now, we're giving them a chance to say, let's open it up, see what you can do. Let's provide the sources. Instruction may have to look a little differently, right? The teacher's not going to be able to stand up there and lecture point A to point B, right? We're going to have to be a little bit more small group, flexible arrangements with students. But at the end of the day, it's what's best for kids, to give them an opportunity to be successful.
There's also been a lot of talk about the DOE handing out some math requirements. Can you speak to that a little bit more?
Well-
Making any sense at all?
Oh, absolutely. The Department of Education earlier on had, you know, made some statements that they were wanting to just not have any accelerated math courses until the upper grades of like 10th, 11th grade, math six, seven, eight, math nine, and then maybe start tracking out. I don't know, I don't know that that's going to come to fruition. That's not the impetus for our decision, right? We're talking about not having the data. I mean, in a normal year, and you have all this information, it's tough for teachers to say, you go to math seven, Ms. Reed, you go to pre-algebra. And that's tough. But if I'm lacking the data, that makes it really even more difficult. So, I'd like to give both of you an opportunity to be successful and set up in an environment where you can be, right? Where we can challenge the kids who need to be challenged and also help the kids move along. And again, what the research would tell you, at the end of the day, the high achievers will be high achievers, and will also bring up the lower achievers. But as far as the DOE policy, I don't know. There was a lot of strong language about that in the fall, and it's sort of, Mrs. Ricker attended numerous, you know, webinars and conversations about that. But I don't know that that's going to come to fruition.
Thank you. Are there any other anticipated changes like this, merging classes, or anything else in the system that we should know about?
Not as I stand here right now. I don't have anything planned for it. I mean, and yet again, those conversations started back in probably February or March with math teachers about, you know, what about placement? Because those, you know, typically, that's when those conversations start happening, what are we going to use for our placement decisions next year, and how's that going to look? And yeah, it's, no, to my knowledge, just those changes.
Any other questions, board members? Thank you, Dr. Shiflett. Thanks for that. Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thanks, Larry. And I do think that the Virginia Pathway Initiative was also built on the same ideas, right? That it's, you can have kids in the same class. Like we talked about, you know, students who could get honors credit for doing honors-level projects but be in the same room with other students that may not do that. And that really, again, based on University of Colorado research, that the benefits are there actually for both groups. But when it comes to the data privacy piece, I do want to point out what Larry mentioned in terms of the data privacy team and the work that Kevin Perkins has done. And we're fairly close to earning the Trusted Learning Environment Seal that's awarded by a national organization. And it required a lot of work. Again, that's what these two years were about. And our first application, a few edits that we need to make. But we would be only the 18th school district in the country to earn that seal. So, to have a data privacy seal at that level. So, again, it shows the type of work that happens, you know, just like Mr. Hutton talked about earlier, right? With the Educational Security Operations Center, that's the only high school in the country that has that. And we're doing similar things with our data privacy for student data. And there's a lot of work that goes into. And as always, we try to do work at the best level as it's supported by research and by national organizations that take this seriously. So, thanks to Mr. Perkins for his leadership in that area as well.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Board members, you have information from Ms. Bocock about the VSBA Conference on Education, which I believe is July 20th. It's a virtual conference. If you have interest in attending that conference, just let Ms. Bocock know, and she'll register you. We'll move into other business, school board questions or highlights. Mrs. Lohr.
Thank you. I just want to say again, thank you to everybody. I mentioned earlier, I held the flute. I couldn't play the flute. And I so much enjoyed watching the musicals and wished I could be like those students. And my family wishes that I could sing like those students. And I didn't get that in high school, but I did have a teacher who inspired me to become an agriculturalist and became the person I am today. And I didn't know the difference between a heifer and a steer when I started that class, but he inspired me to become the person I am today. And thank you, guys. Understand the power that you have to change people's lives. And thank you for all of your work on that, especially in this incredibly difficult year. I too, listened to my mom, who was on the school board, and she never told me it was going to be like this. But we, you have all done an amazing job. And thank you so much for all of your work.
Thank you, Mrs. Lohr. Dr. McQuilkin?
Thank you, Ms. Reed. This is our last school board meeting prior to graduation. Our next school board meeting in June, school will be out. So, I would like to say a big shout-out, thank you to all of the teachers and the staff and the administration who worked so tirelessly through this most unusual year. And I'd like, once again, to highlight the teachers. We're talking about research. Mr. Shiflett talks about research. Dr. Scheichel talks about research. Well, the research shows that the most important person in that classroom is the teacher, number one. And you could see by the Inspire Awards how important teachers are. So, we thank you from the bottom of our hearts. And the second most important are the principals. So, we thank you. And all the rest of us, we thank you as well.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Mr. Falk?
I would just like to echo what Dr. McQuilkin said and say thank you to everyone involved in making Rockingham County such a success in such a challenging year. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Scheichel?
Yeah, I'm going to repeat that, right? Teachers are the most important caring individual in a school for that individual student and for, and really, teachers as a team. So, the biggest impact on learning is the collective efficacy of teachers. So, what they as a group believe is possible for their students. And that's created in part by our administrators in the buildings, right? And so, our work is to create the conditions that allows principals to lead their school and to create that, a feeling of a team in support of the students so that the teachers feel like they're not by themselves. And our teachers and administrators do an amazing job, but none of that happens without a school board that's supportive of all that. And so, it's been a year, and we're not quite done yet. But without the support from this board, we couldn't have made the decisions, you know, that we did and to really have a stepwise increase in students in the buildings. And so, to listen to, you know, VDH, CDC, and our good friend Tony Fauci and do the things that were necessary. And so, I appreciate the support from the board. And so, that's, again, another highlight, certainly in a year that's been anything but normal. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Mr. Hutton, thank you for your hospitality. I neglected to say that earlier. Appreciate it. Thank you for dinner. And the strategic plan looks great. So, thank you for starting to work on that. There's some exciting things that are coming down the pike for MTC. I think the video showed that. So, there's a lot of excitement. And, you know, as always, we're extremely proud of the work that MTC's doing here. And thank you for hosting us this evening. Appreciate it. Board members, we have reason to enter closed meeting. Do we have a motion to make for that?
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to the provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, A1, personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, or resignation. And A2, one or more particular students specifically related to discipline that would involve disclosure of information contained in a schulastic record concerning a student.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any questions or comments, board members? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're now in closed session. Thank you to all of you for coming tonight and spending time with us. Safe travels home.